Yep.
They're calling us meeting to order at 4:07, open session. We'll go through the opening procedures here. The pledge of allegiance, do you guys have a flag there?
Yep.
We know there's a flag that way.
Okay.
Okay.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Looking to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting? Looking for a motion? Looking for a second?
Second.
All in favor? I. Any opposed? Agenda approved? Reviewing norms? Do we want to do that or are we going to skip? To just plow ahead? Raquel?
I think it'd be great if we could just plow ahead.
Okay, let's do that. Focus on district goals, strategic plan, Raquel?
Yeah, we'll actually be hitting all of the, all three of the key areas around finance, staff, and the opportunity gap.
Excellent. Report from closed session?
There's no actionable item to report from closed session.
Okay, thank you. Public comment, Raquel, is there any public comment? People looking for comment on items on the agenda tonight?
We have a couple of attendees that I don't see any hands up and no hands up in the crowd.
Okay, great, going through our consent items. Meeting minutes, action, consider the approval of the meeting minutes from the regular board meeting from June 14th, our last board meeting. Looking for a motion?
Um, David, we can, David, we can do these at one full split.
Okay.
We don't have to do them one.
Okay. Looking for approval on the consent items? H I, one through six.
I moved second.
All in favor? I, any?
Discussion, sorry, David, you had a question. Yeah, David, David, sorry, we just had a question, David?
Yep, please.
Okay. Do you want to do it?
I can just mention it.
Okay.
So I just want to call out, so, under our consent items, we have our minutes, we have human resource, finance, and contracts. So you'll see, we have four different contracts here, and one contract is specifically around transportation. And I was asked about, you know, why are we paying for transportation from the Nevada Unified School District area to ours? And so the situation is the student in which we're transporting is a child that qualifies for homeless services. And so under the McKenna Vento, we're required to pay for transportation if their school of origin was with us and they stay with us, and they have the choice to stay, go to the school that they're currently residing in, or they can continue in the school they were in when they became homeless. So we're required, we have a local agreement with our districts that if there is a child that does that, for example, they live in the Nevada or the other school district, but they want to continue within our schools, then we invoice that school district for 50% of the cost of the transportation. So that's the situation.
Got it. I also had one more question, um, just on the, and I was, I don't know if this is just a standard that we're doing, the facility use application, is that, were there any changes, I guess, from last year's?
Yeah, so we have a 5% increase on our costs.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, so each, each year for the board policy, there's an increase just due to just basically, it's 5%.
Okay, but no other changes on that form? Oh, great, okay.
But one thing I will call out is that we are prioritizing, last year was brought to my attention to really be mindful of how we want people to utilize our spaces and to prioritize programs that are for students.
Yeah.
There was a situation this fall when we were asking, and we looked and we said, okay, let's wait, is this something specifically for adult focus or is this focus for kids? And so continue to ask that question as we look.
Yeah, no, I was very happy to see all of the exciting classes that are coming forward, especially here at Basage, I think that's a great thing to see. I guess run through Ross Rec and Larkspur. Yeah, it's great.
And some private outside of those.
Right, right. Okay, that's it. Sorry, David, all done?
That's right, no good, thanks for your questions. So we got a motion in a second, so all those in favor? I.
I.
Any opposed? Consent items are adopted as presented. Raquel, on to district reports. KTA?
Yeah.
David, Andrew just handed me a microphone and I wanted to check, are you able to hear my voice right now?
I can hear you fine.
Okay, cool, so I think this is just speaking to David. But you all can eavesdrop.
That's what he thinks of this meeting.
And I'm just going to go with this living room vibe right now, so I hope you don't mind if I say. I want to start by saying it's an honor and a privilege to represent the certificated staff of Kent and Basage. And there's renewed optimism this year, I think one that's been, I don't want to say lacking, but the energy's been different. And as I'm walking in the door with Grant, you know, we spent time with Lori, Dr. Lori Watson, and with Marcus Moore about this idea of lenses, and I'll use that metaphor in terms of the enthusiasm of our new staff and our new students and how much joy they're feeling right now. And when I step back and I try to appreciate what it is they're seeing, it's this remarkable culture that we have at Basage and at Kent. And I feel also a huge tribute to Maria's arrival as a site admin, and Anne Marie, welcome, I hope that you thrive along with us, and of course, Grant and Wendy. We've really appreciate your leadership, I think that you instill a lot of confidence in your staff. I believe your staff would run into a burning building with you. Now, that's just a metaphor, okay? Just a metaphor, but you know, there's a lot of trust and, and hope and aspiration for what this year can represent. And regarding Dr. Lori Watson and Marcus Moore, what a great way to start the year, what a great calibration for us to appreciate that we all come in with our own lenses and we have a very, well, let me step back from saying what I was about to say, I think we all come in with a lot of perspectives and what we're getting better at is appreciating that not everyone sees through similar or the same lenses as us, and how important it is when our students enter into the classroom, when they step on campus, that we're welcoming and reaching them as they try to reach us and making those connections with family and with students. And we're ready for that, we have work to do still, it'll be ongoing, but what a great way to start the year. And then I think I just want to wrap with that, that there's just a lot of excitement about the year, and we really appreciate your partnership, of course, with our trustees and with you, Raquel, and with our administration, as I said, of course, with KIC and KSPTA, we all work really hard together to do what's best for our kids and to be responsive for them, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. David, am I still on?
Yep, I can hear you loud and clear.
I did prepare an interpretive dance, but Warren advised me that probably tonight was not the best venue. We, as the classified staff, finished last year really, really strong. And who would have thought that we would begin this year even stronger? We have an amazing leadership, excellent communication, and we have some brand new faces who aren't so new because they're coming from the parent community, so they understand the culture, they know the kids, they have jumped right in, and they are hands down amazing, we have a solid crew this year. But my big shout out has to go to Ramiro and his team. That team of fine gentlemen have flexed their muscles, they have flexed their brains, they have met every challenge and demand that we have thrown at them, they emptied classrooms, filled classrooms, moved things back again, they've been on the grounds, they've been keeping everything in an order to keep us productive and happy, and that's really what, what is going on. They are still the heart and soul of our district, and I hope anybody who's listening makes sure that when you see these guys, you thank them for all the hard work that they're doing, because it, it, it can go unnoticed, but with these guys, they just make everything work really well. So we're off to a great year, a really strong start, great leadership and a great team, and I just want to say thank you to all of you two for your support for us over the last year and getting our team into this really strong and productive place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Raquel, I don't think we have someone from KIC, is that right?
Yeah, Noah Wheeler let us know that he wasn't going to be able to make it here tonight, but can I just say on behalf of the staff and our, extend our appreciation to all that KIC does to support our schools, over a million dollars to our school district this school year, plus an additional $50,000 plus for the fund of need that they raised to support innovation at our school sites, new programs that we'll be launching this year from drama to enhancing our music programs to some facility upgrades. It's a pretty remarkable group of folks that offer a whole lot for our families, for our students, and for our staff in particular, so just want to express my absolute appreciation and gratitude for all that they do.
That's great. And is there someone from PTA?
Yes, we have Raina Sobel here.
Excellent.
Hi, everyone, my name is Raina Sobel, I feel like, is this thing on, so it just goes to David? Okay, I get, I get the joke now, okay. My audience of one, okay, thank you. I'm Raina Sobel, and I'm the KSPTA Executive Vice President, and I know most of you in the room. I'm here tonight instead of our President Tiffany Avalon, which I have an announcement about, she had to resign due to personal reasons. She sent her resignation to the board yesterday and to the leadership in our school district, Raquel and the site principals. So I am here on her behalf, and despite this bump, I wanted you guys to know that I really actually believe that we're going to get through this bump, and we're poised for a really amazing year with KSPTA. I had the privilege of being at the staff breakfast last week, and the energy in the room, I went back and told everyone, it was palpable, it was like, I felt like I was at an Oprah taping or something like that. And I have to say that, because like, everyone was just so excited, I felt like, you know, something free under, actually, I think Raquel did have free things under the, no wonder, it wasn't a car. I should have grabbed one of those, but anyways, and also, we have some continued leadership on the board, we will let everyone know by the end of the week who will be president, and we're just, I feel confident that we're going to have strong leadership, and we also have a lot of great new energy on the board, we have some parents who have like, just first graders, and they're really excited, they haven't had the chance to see what Basage was before, but they've heard rumors, and you know, as we know, it's been a bumpier two years, and they want to bring that back, like, they're jazzed, they're like, wow, you guys aren't tired yet, this is amazing. So I think that between what we have of leadership who's been there for a while and all the new energy, I think it's going to be a great year. We have two positions that were new to the board this year because we didn't have VP for lunch anymore, and I'm excited that Vicki Sanu Song, who most of you know, will be on board as our representing Equity and Inclusion, and we have a parent, Catherine Wagner, who will represent Membership and Resources, and she comes with a lot of experience and she's part of that new bundle of energy. Financially, we had a really successful year last year, as you all know, the Read-thon was a hit, we look forward on expanding that this year, and happy to report that we'll return to some of our pre-pandemic funding as far as teacher stipends, so those have gone down and those will be coming back up, we'll announce more after we vote on our budget. And the grants program isn't finalized yet, we have 15K set aside so far, but we think there's about 30K more to use towards programs, and we'll be following up on that after we voted, and so thank you for your time, and I look forward to a great year.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Take a moment, Raina, before you leave, so thank you for all that you've done and have worked with your executive board to help us have such a positive start to the year, so we have this beautiful breakfast, beautiful spread, I guess it was last week, it feels like just yesterday, that KSPTA hosted, and then tonight, there was supposed to be like this little small, like, welcome back Basage families, and it's practically the whole school population. My husband said you're ordering 506 popsicles. So. We'll be okay. So there's this, and that's why we're trying to rush through, not rush, but trying to hold to an hour meeting tonight, is that there's a Basage family welcome, and really, the whole purpose around it is to introduce Maria Martin, our new principal, and Anne Marie Skaggs, our new assistant principal, but having families join us, and the KSPTA was right behind that to support with the popsicles and waters and sparkly waters and such for parents, so, so thank you for all that you're doing, we really appreciate that. For sure, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Raquel, moving on to superintendent and staff, staff reports. I guess it's just you.
Yeah, yeah, so the site administrators typically would provide a report, but they get a pass tonight, they've got a big day tomorrow, I don't know, it's school starting, right? So, so they have a task, but they will have a very robust report to share at our September meeting, for certain, so where I want to start is, you know, I just have some general items that I'll be going over, but like I was just expressing appreciation to our KSPTA, one of the things that I shared at our welcome back that Annie and David got to participate in last week was a slide specifically speaking to appreciations and honoring our staff, so Gretchen mentioned our custodial team and what they've accomplished this summer, and mind you, they were down to you guys for a significant period of time as well, and Ramiro has just been like, okay, what is it you need, tomorrow he's picking up cases of apples for the breakfast program, so it's just to go to show that willing to do just about anything, this, this lady right here to my left, the arms and legs to support our district office and to support all the back-to-school activities, she and another support staff by the name of Mary Snell have been working together to make all of these different events happen in collaboration with our partners, so special appreciation to Sid and to Mary for that work. Kirsten right there, and Patty Martinez, who's not here, and all that they've done to like, get payroll ready, as you know, we just had a big contract that was approved and a significant shift on salaries and such, and so what Kirsten and Patty did to make that happen is pretty, pretty significant. Andrew, working closely with Jim and the team to get all the technology up and ready to go, we actually had some high school kids come and join us as well this summer and putting, taking apart and putting together computers to try to save possibly good, but special thanks to Andrew. And Edith Valencia, she's a new member of our team that joined us, and she's kind of like, I don't know, the right hand that's supporting the food program, that's supporting our HR support and recruitment, backup receptionist to Sid, and so really, really backbone to support our school operations. And then there's this instructional team, Virginia, Maria, Anne Marie, Grant, and Wendy. What Warren said about the energy in the room on Wednesday, Thursday, I'm not even sure what day it was, but that day was absolutely amazing, and what you all have done to set up, set the stage to open the doors for the kids to cross the gates just in less than 24 hours from now is pretty remarkable. So today, the kids so excited at the Web Leader Day all over campus, the little pumpkins that are going to get popsicles in just a tap. And then in Virginia, I saw you walking around with families, some students that are having that need some additional TLC as they come onto some of our campuses, so I just want to take the time to express my absolute appreciation for all that you guys have done to start this year, and I'm really, really looking forward to a positive year, it's going to be fabulous. Okay, summer activities, so I just touched on quite a few facilities, I will talk a little bit later about our bond and where we're at with that, but a lot of facility activities happening specifically around the HVAC hiring, as you saw on the packet on the personnel action report, that's what we spent a lot of time on hiring, I look at Maria, so a lot on hiring specifically around, I mean, certificated and classified, quite frankly, it actually doesn't, wasn't just one or the other. I have a quick enrollment update, Sid ran a query for me today to see exactly where we're at as we open the doors tomorrow, we will do a first day count, and then I think it's like a seven day or six day count to, to again, look at that, we're sitting right where we anticipated related to our ratios, so ratios haven't gone kind of crazy over in various areas. I'll touch on the new initiatives that we're rolling out, the Universal Transitional Kindergarten Program, last night we got to welcome the new TK parents and Carrie, Carrie and Amber's classrooms, and then the Food for All Program, the breakfast and lunch, I'm calling it breakfast light, by the way, very breakfast light, and then our lunch program. And then I'm going to end with just touching on the theme for the year around connection and heart and the focus that we did on Friday with Marcus and Lori around cultural role in teaching, so. Enrollment, so here's where we're at, so you'll see that column, there's one, two, five columns there, that projected 22, 23, that's the number that we were at in June, on June 14th, when I presented this slide to you last week. So where we are actual as of today, 542 at Basage, 516 at Kent, a total of 1058, I hope that adds to that, yeah. So you see the difference really is around at Basage, it's mainly kindergartners, couple TKers, so where we've landed related to ratios, we're right where we thought we'd be, a range that for K5, excluding first grade, from 20 to 25 average class size, and then for first grade, it's a 21 average, and then Kent, it's hard to capture at Kent just because that, because of the way six through eight middle school runs, but we're maintaining that 28 to 30, so just for people to have that update in terms of our enrollment. So what's interesting is we're going up, but remember, we've added a grade level, right? So that's just something to note that we didn't have previously, and we're at 29 right now, Maria, if I, in terms of TK. So that's where we're at, enrollment, enrollment status, new initiatives, so on the left-hand side, as I mentioned, Universal Transitional Kindergarten, I cannot wait to see these little pumpkins show up tomorrow, parents were super excited, we have also brought in some extra hire for tomorrow, because typically we don't have par professionals on Wednesdays, and we're just anticipating, these are four-year-olds, right? On this big campus for the first time, some of them are siblings, and they know the campus, and they're good to go, but some of them aren't, and we're not just worried about our TKers, our kindergartners, and even some of our first graders, so just being cognizant of that, and that was just some pre, pre-planning that Maria said, hey, I'm wondering if maybe we should, right? So great idea, so we'll have that. Our Food for All Program, so our breakfast program, as I mentioned, breakfast light, it's going to be a drop-in, we, the, the administrators are calling it a breakfast club, where kids come, they'll get something like a granola bar and a piece of fruit, before school access, you don't have to sign up, we got these little carts, we'll be putting the food here, it's going to be right in front of the community center, and over at Kent, it's going to be right in front of the office area, so we are needing a staff for that position, like an extra hire 45 minutes before school starts, so we're, you know, trying to leverage what we have, I will say that's a really hard role to fill, but I have confidence that we'll, we'll make it work, so that's for the breakfast program. Our lunch program, 550 for a regular-sized meal, $6 per, for a larger-sized meal, we are giving people the donation option, and they must preorder, so just for some background, we launched the website, I don't know, maybe sometime last week or so, so it did come out late, we were waiting because we wanted to do everything at once, and when I say everything, we wanted to have the app where people could order on, on an app or on a website. Unfortunately, we weren't, we were having some technical difficulties with that, the one thing, if you recall, we wanted to be sure we did, is have a donation button, so that families would be able to donate if they so chose, and the issue that we were having is, we didn't want to go live with a zero, because then nobody would, people would get conditioned to never pay, and we didn't want to go live with a price that you had to, where it perceived that you were paying, right? So we ultimately did our workaround, which was a Google form, and that's what people have, and that's what they've been ordering on. I will tell you right now, we have about 200 orders or 200 people that have signed up for lunch, total, of those, 57% are accessing it for free and 43 are donating, so it's about a split. And one of the things I do want to just name, because I really struggled with the communication, so as you know, we did circular, I also did a newsletter last night, and I touched on the, I had a whole section around the food program, and this is on our website, I want to be really careful about pressuring families to donate, because there could be a sense, especially in my role as a superintendent and my communications, because it can, it can make people feel bad or shame, right? So we have to be really careful, and I think we talked about this, like, how do you, how do you navigate that type of communication? And so, you know, with, with the kind of communication we've done today, to have almost a 50/50 split is pretty good, I would say, so I just wanted people to kind of have a sense of where we're at, I'm in ongoing communication with Dee, who's our food, our lunch provider, she and I are going to chat this afternoon to just talk about how tomorrow's delivery will happen and such, so I'm super excited to launch the program, but I will tell you, it has added a whole nother layer of work.
Yeah.
To the office and to the sites too, because we're, you know, I was talking with Anne Marie earlier, okay, so for breakfast, what if we do this, and I was just talking with Maria and have had conversations with Grant and Wendy, and I know they've all been talking with their staffs about how we rule this out, so Kirsten was buying granola bars earlier today, right? So I was buying carts over the weekend, so there's just, just to note, like, it's additional, with an unfunded mandate and requirement from the state, it, it comes with a lot of responsibility and actions that we need to put. So. The next thing I have.
Raquel, before you do that slide, I am curious about the, I was noticing the language you were using too, and I was curious to see if that's sort of the language the state is encouraging, because I noticed you used the word, if you need, you know, lunch or something like that, and I, I just am curious, like, what, is there suggestive language from the state? I, yeah, I thought that was an interesting word to use, you know?
No, there's, there's not, not that I'm seeing, I've looked at what other colleagues, how they're communicating it, and people are doing very much alike, come have free lunch.
Right.
And we're, we're not doing that, but we're also not really pushing the donation piece, like, I mean, I, you know what I'm saying, like, I was trying to balance how I was saying it, trying to.
Right, and I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to say, I, I would rather see us not come have free lunch, but in that camp versus the being overly restrictive, you know, and again, I'm speaking with one voice, but that was the purpose of this, you know, of this program at a state level, to push out was to make this available for any families that, you know, think they need it, right? And so, I don't, I would hate for us to go down that road, I'm glad to see we offer that donation option, but I don't, I personally don't think it should be overly pushed, and I think you're balancing that.
And I think other districts are also asking for donations, so we're not the only one, but, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So then, Raquel, are we going to start tracking like, the numbers for the lunch program and sharing it during every board meeting?
Um, yeah, I mean, I mean, I just told you the numbers, right? So we are definitely tracking it.
So it'll continue, so every meeting, we'll just get some updates?
Yeah, we'll give an update as to where we're at, because we know we had a plug number, right? What we anticipated, but we had no idea.
Right.
And so there's some sorting to do, and you know, every time you do a Google form, you do it, and then you're like, oh, I should have set it up that way versus that way, right? So Dee's been great to work with, but this has been kind of a challenging, a little bit of a rush at the, at the last minute here, so it's been, it's been a hard one, but, but we're going to make it happen, it's going to work out.
And then, yeah, the F R, sorry, keep going, F R L, so I'm going to go for, yeah.
Well, my question was, so are the schools, are they set up to handle the actual distribution of the lunches, like?
No, so the schools aren't distributing the lunch.
So it's Dee, so it's Laura's and her staff.
And her.
At both sites.
What the sites provided, and please feel free to chime in, is they did a tour with Kirsten and with Edith to talk about where the locations where we're, where the lunch would be distributed, and so Dee will be delivering it, she has the schedules, she'll deliver the lunch, and then she will be there with her staff to distribute it out to the students. She and I talked about what the labeling will look like, so that it's ready for kids and then the overage, so we ordered extra lunches for those that didn't sign up, so we have that ready, and I, we ordered a real basic, we did the sun butter and jelly as the extra, not, you know, and so, so anyway, so that's, but it's not, that should not be on the staff, the part that we're trying to hire internal staff, where is the breakfast piece right now, and that's where people are stepping in, so Ginny Sellers has agreed to help support the Kent site for this week, and Edith is going to be supporting here over at Basage this week, so hopefully we'll have somebody in play.
Okay. Oh, great, okay. Yeah.
That you're going to ask about the F R L program of like, because I know that that was such a big heavy lift of getting people signed up for the program, is that all been taken care of, making sure that all of those families that were current, that were in the F R L program are all been signed up and ready to go?
Yeah, so Yvette has been quite busy, so she's been in communication with families, as you know, we did office hours today and last week, last Thursday, we did it in the evening, and then we did it today, and so in that process, people were signing up for their lunch, we had them do paper process last week, and then we inputted it for them, so they all have like, the Google form piece, and so, and that's why we're going to have extras in case people didn't sign up yet.
Okay.
But, but we had a nice showing, I, I think, I have to think about how many people I saw there today at Kent, it was a really good time that we did it today at Kent, because it was when they did the fifth grade orientation, so parents tended to play around, and so they were able to pick up their kits, and so it was a good time, the Basage was pretty light, we didn't have a lot of.
Okay. This is exciting, congratulations on getting this off the ground. I think this is a big deal.
Congratulations, Kirsten.
I know, really.
And you know, I will tell you, we got an email, we got an email, was it yesterday, from a district saying, hey, any chance you want to, you want to partner with us for the universal? So we're like ahead of game.
They just are starting like, now?
Wow.
Wow.
We definitely don't want to partner with them. That's a big no.
So I want to end with my presentation with this slide here, and so this is a familiar slide for folks, but this was, I didn't show this exact slide, but I did highlight the piece around diversity, inspiration, and connections at the back-to-school welcome on Thursday of last week, and the reason I want to highlight this one is, I also want to touch on our strategic plan and our goals, and what I talked about with staff was just, you know, last year, our focus was around every learner and how were we working on that opportunity gap, and we're continuing that, but also layering on the piece around community, and really trying to think about how we want to maintain the connections that we have and the, the community collaboration and how vital it is, and so we had the chance to come together as a team. And so we had the chance to come together as a team, do some inspirational work yesterday in the newsletter. You may have seen some pictures from the event that we had two teachers actually facilitate, which was really cool. And that kick is actually sponsoring that too, by the way. So that was really great. And then Marcus and Lori came and spoke with us and as Warren mentioned around just kind of what is our lens in terms of how we're looking? And so keeping that, I love, I love that I get to say we're going into our year two focus on the culturally relevant teaching and maintaining that focus. And so I just, and you'll see there's contracts in here for both Marcus and Lori. So just looking forward to continuing that work and. And the hope and the inspiration, I mean, it's really, really exciting. Anne Marie said we're the best district she's ever worked for. So that was. Just that's some of the little, little updates.
I need to tell my friends that. Just kidding.
Just kidding. I can say it too, I worked in a number of districts in this county, so. Um, okay, so David, you want to, I took you off because I'm fixing that.
Yeah, that's great. Would, did you have anything on educator effectiveness and bond update? Are you okay on that?
David, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Oh, you're muted, David.
No, I'm not.
Sorry.
Can you hear me now? I'm not muted on my end.
He's muted, you guys, I don't know why.
No, I'm not.
He's not good on his, on Zoom. It's because.
Oh, sorry. There he is.
I'm not muted on this side, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Raquel, did you have anything on educator effectiveness block grant or bond update?
Yes, I do, I do. So I'm going to go back here again. So educator effectiveness, the educator effectiveness block grant. So just to remind people, this is a five year grant, some funding we received from the state. It's specifically to provide professional learning and to promote educator equity, quality and effectiveness. So this here, I'm not going to read it to you, but it's a list of the various ways in which you can utilize the dollars. The reason I'm bringing this forward to you tonight is because we're requesting an amendment to our plan that was approved in December. So I want to remind folks of the timeline that we did when we first got this money. So if you recall, we were awarded the dot, the funding last fall. And so in the fall of twenty one, we did a focus group and a staff survey, I want to say in the month of November. And then we did a board presentation regarding the funds and the allowable expenditures. In December, we came forward with a preliminary plan. Because we had, we were required by the state to have the board approve a plan. I feel like it was by that December, it was a very short turnaround. And at that time, I had shared with the board, listen, this is where we're going to put it in these buckets. But please know that it's something that we're going to continue to monitor and we may address, adjust the plan a bit. So that's exactly what we did from February through June. And so the principals have asked to utilize the dollars in different ways. I've actually really put the money more towards the sites in terms of where they're seeing their sites going and what the needs that they have. So what I did hear that you'll see up on this slide to try to help, you guys have the, it's in an action agenda item. But you'll see in December of twenty one, there were sections two, section four and section seven. And that's where we had Pop put the money. So the hundred and thirty three approximately sixty, about sixty seven thousand, both in section four and section seven. So the first was around the alignment of curriculum. The second was around school climate and the third was around effective language acquisition. So now what I'm coming forward with you, you'll see it's in more sections. So section one is around coaching and mentor support and specifically the standards based grading. And some additional support on in math coaching and support over at Kent Middle School. And section two is around effective standards line curriculum. And so we're maintaining what we had before, but we just moved the money around a tad. People re engagement in section three, that is the increase of paraprofessional support, specifically here at Facetage. Section four around school climate, social emotional learning. That we added some money there specifically to support the intern supervision over at Kent Middle School. And then the last one was effective language acquisition. That one decreased a bit and that didn't, that doesn't mean that we're decreasing the services for our English language learners. It just means that we're going to be utilizing other restricted dollars. So the overall amendment is increased expenses for this current fiscal year and more actions to support student success. And so it's around instructional coaching, par professionals, professional learning and social emotional wellness. So just an overview for you all to have when you look at that template, because that's a state required template that we had utilized. And I wanted you to know over the sections that change. That's what I have on educator effectiveness, David.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to say anything about bond?
Sorry, can I ask one quick question about this? Although on the increase on the classified math instructional coach support for middle school students, I'm just curious. I'm, is that more differentiation, so it's high and low or is it just targeting students that need more support? Okay. Okay.
But also.
Great, okay. I think that's such a nice one to highlight, by the way, I think that's, you know, I feel like that's one we've heard just years and years and years. Certainly at a board level, but that's, I think, just a great, great use of funds. And I know that that's been a certainly apparent request, so. That's all.
Related to bond. So bond update. So I just wanted to be sure we have this memorialized specifically for our end of our final report that we'll be doing shortly. So HVAC units is basically what we were working on this summer. And so the sites have been fully prepped to have those HVAC units fully implemented or. Put in place. The issue we have is when there's a delay, the manufacturer, and it's actually at both sites. So we have a delay at Kent and Basage. So what we're anticipating is November, December, they will be able to be fully put in. But they've done everything for the infrastructure piece of it. So it's just a matter of, once we get the notification that they've arrived, we'll calendar out. I just actually got an email from later up about, we're, we're still on that side, that timeline. September, we're planning to finish the multi use room over at Kent. And then we're anticipating the receipt of those units in October and put them in November, December. But, and we're running right along budget. And remember, we're using bond funds and also we're using the OPSC dollars that we received because we were a little over on that bond balance. I think that's it that I have.
Are you closing out the bond, the update? This was from the newsletter. In, so it's, it's next year, two thousand twenty three will be the final report of bond dollar spent, right?
My hope is that we'll be able to have that final report happen in January.
Oh, wow, okay, great.
Hope, because theoretically, this will be all done.
I thought I was going to say, it should be done at that point, okay, great.
And Raquel, just because November, December are months where we're in session, is this happening on the weekends or how?
So we're, we're doing, we're thinking through the breaks that we have. So remember, we have that one week in November and then December, we have the two weeks, obviously. So we're planning not to have when my kids are in session, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Finance, I see the forty five day revision update. Here, do you want to go through any of that?
Yeah, Kirsten's going to give a quick update.
Yeah, I probably know. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay. So the forty five day budget revision reflects new funding made available by the Budget Act, by the California Budget Act. Changes to our district's adopted budget include an increase to our LCFF supplemental and concentration grant, as well as other new state grants. The item on the agenda is for information only and the formal revisions will be presented to the board at the first interim budget report. That's in December of two thousand twenty two.
Any questions on the forty five day revision from the board?
Nope. So just, it kind of sounds like a little bit of. Like school language, right? But the bottom line is you might have heard that there was going to be additional funding that school districts were going to receive. So we've gotten the notification related to that. It's right now, we still don't have the pool on from CDE, the confirmation of all of our apportionment. So we want to hold on announcing any kind of like the specific numbers, but just know that we're receiving special dollars. That will be discretionary, but have a little bit of a focus.
Great.
So discussion action, David?
Okay, yeah, let's move ahead. So discussion action, we'll go through these one at a time or can we do them by? Item number, can I do one A through D altogether or we need to do it one at a time?
No, we'll need to do them one by one.
Okay. On K one A, action, consider the approval of the Chromebook lease contract with Providence Capital Network amount to exceed sixteen thousand, a hundred and forty dollars for twenty two, twenty three school year. Looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second? Any discussion?
Just to note that this is something that we were budgeted for, so it wasn't, so this isn't an increase in it, so we'll budget it into the multi year.
Okay. Hi, any opposed? Okay, the. The Chromebook lease contract is approved as presented. One B, action, consider the approval of the professional development contract with Dr. Lori Watson of Racework. For twenty two, twenty three school year amount to exceed twenty eight thousand. Let's see, we have that paperwork, looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have one comment, I, I think this is an amazing, I'm so happy to see this again that we're doing this. But I just was curious if there's a strategy to attract more parent participation this year. I mean, we all enjoyed those of us who attended, but I know compared to with the students and the faculty participation, those are, you know, often, it just. It seems like such a unfortunate thing. And I don't know if it's worthwhile to partner with kick or PTA or I don't, I don't, you probably have ideas, but that just seems like something. That we would want to really improve this year.
Yeah, so I did ask her to kind of recalibrate her proposal, because it was, the original proposal was significantly higher than this. One of the things she said at our last. Or just this past week when we saw her was to try to engage with our slam students more. So if there is a way to bring them into having their parents participate, where they actually get to participate with their parents, maybe a strategy. We also had talked about the whole notion of the ambassadors for those people that have participated. So I do think we need to be very deliberate to get people, because it is expensive.
I know, that's the thing I was going to say.
So I just want to be sure that we really get all that we can out of that.
Yeah.
But I think your idea about partnering with KIC or KSP TA.
Right.
Would be really, really well.
Right, and I think it's one of those things, if people came, we obviously know how amazing it is. But it's just like getting people in the door, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion points? Okay, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? One B, professional development contract is approved as written. One C, consider the approval of professional development contract with Marcus, Marcus Moore of NEAP. Palmers for twenty two, twenty three school year amount not to exceed seventy five hundred. Looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second? Any discussion?
So I do want to just point out that this was specifically for the workshop that we just did on the eighteen. So this is only for one workshop. So he and I are going to talk more about his costs because the original proposal was quite, quite expensive. And so you heard, we do not hear staff talk so highly often about the professional developers. Our staff are really, really supportive of these two facilitators.
Yeah.
That being said, we only have so much money, right? So we have to kind of, you know, balance everything out. And, and the things that we're thinking about that we want to do, it's, there's the cost of the facilitator, but then there's sub costs and there's extra higher time costs. And so there's other additional costs that come into play. So just to know, a lot of this is planned through the educator effectiveness money. But just that you may see another contract and it's because with Marcus in particular, because we'd be adding stuff on. So just wanted you to be aware.
Okay, thank you for that. Ready to vote on this, all those in favor? Hi, any opposed? One C is adopted as written. One D, consider the approval of the amended educator official effectiveness plan proposal. Looking for a motion? Looking for a second? A discussion?
Because I just want to remind folks, this is one time money. So I totally hear what you're saying, Heather, about.
I know differentiation, I know.
Remember that this is one time money, so.
Yeah.
The idea is to coach people up so that we build up the skillset so that we don't have to continue to maintain, because we won't have the dollars too. But, right, right. But we are lucky to have this money right now. We're spending it.
All right, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Amendment, plan is approved as written. Two A, consider the approval of amended articles of the KESPA collective bargaining agreement. Looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So just in full transparency, we're bringing this forward because the original contract that was approved that came forward to the board. There were two areas that we, as a, as KESPA, as well as the KSD agreed, there was some omissions that we needed to fix. So one of those was in article twenty, it said. At the start of the tenth year, not after the start of the tenth year, and that actually has a fiscal impact. And when speaking with KESPA representatives, they agreed that the intention was after the tenth year. That's how it's always been, and so we agreed to amend that, so that was one. And then in article twenty five, the original contract, New Year's Day, which is a federal holiday, right? We've always provided that to people and was not listed on the holidays that they would be presented for. So, so we wanted to add that in. So those were the two things, they were things that we had budgeted for and we anticipated, but wanted to just kind of do the, all the steps that we needed to be sure that it was correctly memorialized.
Thank you for that and thank you for the, the explanation as well as the cover sheet on there. It's super, super helpful to go through these. Ready to vote on this, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? The KESPA CBAs adopted as written with these amendments. To be considered the approval of resolution one to hire retired and intuent Elizabeth Fogel for vacant position of administrative assistant to superintendent and the Board of Trustees. Looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So Sid will be stepping away effective August thirty first. And so sad to see her go, but you know, wish her luck in her new opportunity. Elizabeth Fogel is somebody that works in Mill Valley School District. She was administrative assistant and one of the elementary schools for a number of years. And most recently was the executive assistant to the board and superintendent. So she comes with a high level of skillset lawyer by background too. Lawyers just like it here. And so, you know, so she'll be joining us, she's going to come by this week to meet the staff, but we'll be stepping in effective September first. As an interim, and then we'll do a full recruitment.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll put it to a vote, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? That action is approved as written. Thank you, Raquel, for acting so quickly on that too and finding such a great interim person. And on C, consider the approval of variable term waiver as a condition of employment for Spanish teacher Claudia Indalacato. Looking for a motion? Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion?
This just allows us to continue to work with this current employee in obtaining her credentials, so.
Okay, any other questions on this from the board? Okay, moving to a vote, all those in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Okay, the variable term waiver is adopted as, as presented. Item D, two D, consider the approval of amended salary schedule for classified management. Looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Um, so there's no fiscal change on here, other than we wanted to be sure that these were as transparent as all our other salary schedules. So it lists the benefits that are these classified management members receive, so related to vacation days or if they receive a. A stipend for mileage or phone stipend, et cetera. So we just wanted to have it memorialized.
Okay, so when you had written budget, the fiscal impact budget plan for two thousand twenty two, twenty three. What is that, so you're saying it doesn't have? Okay, so when you had written budget, the fiscal impact budget plan for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, what is that, so you're saying it doesn't have a fiscal impact?
Yeah, so it was in the budget plan.
Got it, okay.
The budget that was adopted.
Perfect, makes sense.
Okay, ready for a vote, all those in favor? Bye.
Bye.
Any opposed? The salary schedule amendment is adopted as presented. Three policy actions, consider the approval of the inter-district transfer from Ross Valley School into Kentfield School District for twenty-two, twenty-three school year, this is an eighth grader, looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion?
With my understanding, this child currently attends the Ross Valley School District, so has not been attending our schools, and wants to, you'll see there in the backup that you have related to, is there a reason for the transfer?
Is the parent or representative here?
Not in the room, not in the room.
Okay. Not in the attendees? No. Okay. Should we move straight to a vote, or does anyone want to discuss this any, any further?
I don't think we, I don't think we need to discuss it.
No.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this inter-district transfer into the district? All those opposed? Hey.
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 The inter-district transfer request is rejected at this time. A second inter-district transfer request, inter-district transfer from Kentfield to Larkporta Madera School District. Looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No, no.
Looking, moving to a vote to approve this inter-district transfer from Kentfield to Larkporta Madera, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? The inter-district transfer is approved as presented. Inter-district trans, employee-related inter-district transfer, three C, consider the approval of Kentfield School District employee-related twenty-two, twenty-three inter-district transfer, a fifth grader, looking for a motion?
I moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Of, any discussion? Moving to a vote, all those in favor? Hi. Any opposed? The employee-related inter-district transfer is approved as presented. Moving on to governance. Item L, L one, provisional appointment.
So can we, can, because it's five o'clock.
Should we excuse? Yeah. Site leadership to run their event?
Yeah.
Wow.
You should probably go.
Yeah, good luck, good luck.
Thank you, thanks so much. Enjoy. Yeah, I think, I mean, the, we typically, the, you guys are more than welcome to stay for this part too, but you don't have to.
Oh yeah, you should. Yeah. All right, see you guys, bye.
Yes, welcome back.
Have you back to school? I know, good luck tomorrow.
Twenty-four hours, yes.
The sand is coming out of the sand.
That's right.
See you Kirsten.
Bye Kirsten.
Raquel, are we gonna take, are we gonna take some time to talk about these governance issues now? Or do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, I can give the background if you want, about kind of where we're at, in terms of the provisional appointment, and I can just share what I know.
Okay, let's do that. But also sensitive to your time, Raquel, did you want to go to join the basic event right away?
Yeah, I'll go out there, she's supposed to not get on the mic till five fifteen.
Oh, okay, great.
So I'll be, yeah. Um, so I just want to be sure you guys all have, I think you're aware, we had two official filings, Silver McDonald's and Benny Joseph, so we still have one seat that it wasn't filed for, and we also have the provisional appointment for the period of time in which Davina Goldwasser resigned from her role. And so we did not, we have not yet, that I'm aware of, received any applications for that. And so I did outreach to Dan Miller and asked him, what's the process, like, what do we do from here? And so the bottom line is, they will reach out to us, most likely myself, maybe the board president as well, to say, hey, you still have one vacant seat, and so you're gonna need to go through your process again. Meaning we will do the provisional appointment process one more time, and if we can't get somebody through that, then what happens is then it goes to the county superintendent's schools, who typically then would convene with us, see what's going on, and then may call a special election, which we don't want that to happen, but there's gonna be some time. So he said he'll probably reach out to me, we're like mid-September, because they're going through all their stuff right now, they'll reach out to me mid-September, and then we'll have like a sixty-day timeline to figure out. And, and then whoever gets that provisional appointment would be the person that would be seated for the four-year term. Right, so right now, we were trying to get a provisional appointment filled for Davina, the only reason we had to do that, like, this close.
Right, right.
To the timeline with being able to push it out a little bit. So in this next time, what'll happen is, we'll, we'll get one applicant, that person will then be for the four-year.
The whole time, for the full time, okay.
So we can't have current board members, you have to be officially out before you can come back in, so theoretically, let's just pretend, there was somebody that, that, somebody, you could wait until the December when your term is up, and then in January come back on, if there was an interest there.
What about the, sorry, the, um, the shorter term one for Davina's role, we're going through that process.
We're in that process right now.
But we don't have anyone who submitted for that either, so both, sorry.
Well, they overlap, so what happens, it's, yeah.
It's basically empty for a little over four years.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, so it kind of starts to merge into each other.
I know, I know.
So we have until August twenty-ninth for that one.
Okay, okay. Wow.
We have till August twenty-ninth for what, Raquel?
August twenty-ninth for the applications, and then we have to appoint somebody by September fifteenth. If we don't, and the idea was that the September thirteenth board meeting, we would have done the interviews.
That's right.
But if we don't, then we'll just have to go through the process all over again.
Wow.
Okay, so. Just for wrap.
Six days then, yeah, so sorry, twenty-ninth, we're saying, but I, wow. And no one has heard anybody coming forward at this point, okay. Wow. Should we be announcing, I'm just wondering, thinking out loud, at all of these events, I mean, should we be making a plug at these events? I mean, we get, all parents are at the events, you know, I don't know.
Uh, so I think at the two back-to-school nights that we're gonna have.
Yeah.
There could be something, I, I really, I'm not speaking at either one of the back-to-school nights, I really want it to be the site administrators, and then this is a real, like, social event, so I don't want to, like, ask for donations, I don't want to.
Right, no, that totally makes sense.
Kind of have people sign up for stuff, so, you know, we could do a PSA, like, we could really do, like, a little, other little video that we pushed out as a standalone, we really need somebody.
But I do think that the back-to-school nights, that's probably the only time you're gonna get.
You're gonna have so many people in front of you.
I mean, literally everyone in front, I mean, I don't know, I just, thinking, I like, this is a pretty unique circumstance, because if we get pushed to a special election, for example, that's dollars out of our.
Thirty thousand or more.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand for contested election, and if we do special election, we'll have to pay, no matter what, an election that we have to run is gonna be thirty thousand.
Yeah.
So does, as a trustee, we had, did not have a trustee speak at the back-to-school nights last year, we could have a trustee address it at a back-to-school night. So David, if you're available and you want to.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do it, I suspect that I'm gonna be out of COVID purgatory here any day, so I'm, I'm happy to do it if you think it's appropriate.
Yeah, so we could do that, and then I can just talk with both Grant and Maria, I can let Grant know, because this is Thursday night, so as long as you're out, David, by Thursday.
Yeah, I think I will be.
Be outside, I believe, in that quad area, so.
If we have somebody. Oh, he's right here.
There he is.
Yes.
Um, if for some reason David can't do it Thursday night, I will be there, because I have a Kent student, so.
Okay.
I could, I could make that announcement.
Okay.
If we need a non-COVID person.
Yeah, yeah.
I had it in May, I'm done, I'm done with, I'm done with my purgatory.
Yeah. Okay, so, so yeah, I mean, I can have, you know, we didn't do it last night, but we can.
And last night would have been too, I mean.
I know, these are truly TKK.
They have no idea what's going on.
Right, they're not gonna be trustees, I don't think yet.
Okay.
Okay, I'm mindful that we have like six minutes, so we all probably, we all should probably go into that event.
Um, okay. We're, David, you want to move on to board goals?
Yeah, yeah, board goals. I'm not sure what.
We have. Yeah, we have a workshop on the thirtieth.
Yep.
And so we were, we had scheduled that, we had scheduled that for eight to ten.
I'm having surgery that day.
Yeah, so. So I can.
Zoom in.
From the operating room, because my surgery's at eight-thirty, so that'll be interesting.
So, um, what, the, the reason we picked that date and that time was really, was Davina's schedule.
Oh.
So I do think we could go, we could move it, I don't know details on your surgery, but.
You don't, you probably don't want to talk to me that afternoon either.
No, I guess you know.
I mean, I don't know what the drugs will be like, but.
But we could go to the thirty-first, the next day, if it's, you know.
If you're, if you're comparing calendars, I, I can do, I have quite a lot of flexibility on the Wednesday. Just one thing in the middle of the day on Thursday, and then a lot of availability on Friday.
And we were blocking, I'm sorry, two or three hours, how many hours were we blocking?
We were blocking two hours.
So like, ten to twelve on the thirty-first?
I could do that.
I can't do ten to twelve, I can do eleven to one.
I have a twelve-thirty appointment.
I'd have to go later on Wednesday, then, if you wanted to do Wednesday.
What about Monday to twenty-ninth?
It's available for me. And then, other than three or four.
Yeah, I'm wide open.
Say it again.
Um, I have a meeting from twelve to one.
Uh, could you do ten to two, ten to twelve?
Or? I have to be home and on a meeting at noon, so like, assuming, I can, this is my problem, I have to have that ten-minute.
Yeah.
Sliver of time to like, get places. So could you, one, or you can't do three to four?
I cannot do three to four.
Um, do you want to do, this is really just setting, I think we know what our focus is, so it's really just setting that, and then talking, scheduling stuff, and talking about some of the things that the board had asked about to bring back, like special ed, for example. Um, so do you want to just try to do an hour and a half?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure, that's fine.
Do you have? Ten to eleven-thirty?
Yeah. On the twenty.
On the twenty-ninth of August, okay. Ten to eleven-thirty. Got it, yeah. Thirty. And then I had asked Ken Epstein, who was helping us with the community re-engagement work, to come to this workshop, to share a five-minute blurb on what he gathered from all of his surveys.
Okay.
Okay, to get closure on that, to see if we needed to use any of that was our focus, right, so just to try to close the blurb on that, so hopefully he'll be able to make that time, but we'll plan for that for now. Eight twenty-nine, ten to eleven-thirty, okay, um, board meeting highlights. Back to school. Well, you guys, it was so positive, it was like, so positive.
Yeah, I think of the, even highlighting, I know we didn't get to hear the, obviously, back-to-school updates with the students, but just highlighting the faculty and staff, and all the gratitudes I think that were shared were really nice, you know, I think those were. And the Marcus Moore and Lori Watson, and that they, you know, that was part of it, and that type of work, you know, even, I think what you mentioned too, about like the, the words that came out of it, I forget what they were, inspiration and inclusion, or whatever, those community, or.
Connection is hard.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'll send something to you guys, you guys can look at, but highlight back to school, I think that should just be that. Future agenda items. Things that, so Annie, I heard you say similar to enrollment.
Oh, sorry, did you want to highlight the, the launch of the lunch program, now that I know that, like, um, other districts haven't done it yet, but that's kind of a big deal, that we got it up in time for the school year, I don't know if that's, you know, notable.
I can add it in there.
Yeah, I don't know, do you guys feel like that's notable?
That's a huge.
Yeah, I, I think it's huge, I know, I was gonna say that, you know, I mean, if you really wanted to, you could do UTK too, the fact that both of those major initiatives that got launched successfully, you know? And all the criteria is check all the boxes, which was, you know, major lifts, the bathrooms, all of that stuff, right? Big deal.
Um, okay, so new. Um, so future agenda items, so Annie, I heard you on the food program, I'll bring back information about enrollment when we actually land, like, you wanna see the whites of the eyes.
Task results, I think you'd mentioned, we're gonna hear about those anyway, in September.
Yeah.
Or whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, so you guys have very preliminary information, very high level.
Yeah.
And then. Okay.
And then I, the only other thing we could circle back on potentially is the, look, Dr. Lori Watson and Marcus Moore, and a parent event, like with KIC and or KSPTA. It might be a nice KSPTA parent ed event, sort, like a social, a combination social parent ed option.
Okay.
Although KIC could certainly participate as well.
Yeah. IDT policy too, of revisiting that at some point?
We did, but I feel like September is the hardest.
Yeah, okay, that's just like.
Especially we're interviewing candidates, fingers crossed.
Yeah, true enough, okay.
So maybe October.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
And on that, by the way, is this meeting being recorded right now?
Yes.
Okay, because I, I was just saying, I think in, in future, when we go through those items on IDT, we may just want to articulate, you know, past practices of the district.
Yeah.
Just for the benefit of people who may listen to the recordings later. You know, specifically, I was thinking about with the, um, the, I don't know if it was a daughter or some child of a faculty that was getting a transfer, just to, so it's articulated.
Clearly, yeah.
Yeah.
Good point.
We, we can, typically, we would say something.
Right.
So we can, I do, that, one of the things I, I have on our list to talk about governance is, are we gonna continue to report?
Right, right.
So I would love if we didn't have to keep doing Zoom, when we have emergency situations, I think it's fine, or people do conference call in, but, but anyway, so I think it's something that we should talk about.
Right, right.
I'd be interested to know, Raquel, what other people are doing, other districts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And something just came out today, I got a legal opinion about Brown Act stuff, so.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Okay, so I, we don't have any reports, we, I see the pertinent dates, now this, anyone has anything they want to report?
No, I mean, Heather and I were at the KIC back-to-school night last night, and it was adorable and enthusiastic and super positive.
And thoroughly impressed, yeah.
All good things.
Yeah, really impressive.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and Annie and I were at the staff thing, and it was, everyone said it, you know, the enthusiasm was palpable, and great new hires, really solid new hires.
Yeah, it's great, it's great. You know, on the reports from grade levels, would it be worthwhile to just remind, you know, site leadership, you know, who we are, and kind of like, that, which grades are assigned to who?
So we had a staff retreat, which is not atypical, you typically do that with our administrative team, and so we gave them these administrative, these finders that kind of went over a variety of things, and one of them was about the GLCs and the board representatives, and so kind of going through the process, and we actually just gave them that.
Oh, that's great.
Okay. About it, to help with that, so, and they're gonna switch here soon, because we're gonna have some folks.
Right, right.
Right. So, okay.
Okay, I, I see the pertinent dates, is there anything missing that people are seeing, missing from the next three months?
Oh, looks great, and congrats to, I think, Sid and Raquel for getting all the dates out for the committees over the summer, I think that was, just to have that already locked in our calendars was really smart, thank you.
Except when things change.
No, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the thing, we have to monitor that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay. So you know with Davina's, the cur committees, do, do we have to take it on, or like? There tended to be tw- two people, so like.
Overlap on every single one, I saw that.
Two people on it, yeah, so if she's off, then one of us is still there.
Has to fill on, oh, okay.
It's already there, until we fill the seat.
Okay, so we don't have to, okay, all right, yeah.
Okay, it just happened that way, I was.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works.
Okay, let's go out there and see the.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks everyone, sorry for the zooming, all that. Okay, thanks everyone, sorry for the Zooming, all that craziness, but I'll be back.
No, no, no. Take care, David.
Okay, David, you want to adjourn us?
Okay, you have to adjourn.
Officially.
Adjourn the meeting at five seventeen.